Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. If we could, if we could call the meeting to order. I need just a minute or two at the top of the meeting to cover a couple of housekeeping things and then we'll dive right in. The first thing I want to mention is that we have the room from 6:00 to 7:00 today and so we will have a hard stop at 7:00 o'clock. We've talked about the frequency of these meetings and the conversation tonight. Folks, I can't hear myself if there's, I just can't hear up here because of the acoustics in this room. If there's lots of interest tonight and good things going on, we will certainly schedule future meetings and we'll talk about length and frequency. But for tonight, I wanted to let everybody know that we have the meeting room from 6:00 to 7:00. So, I'm Ed Woods, I'm the vice chair of the meeting and like I said, I want to call the meeting to order. Couple of things. It is a publicly warned meeting, which means that we are taking minutes. Nancy Lively, as always, is taking minutes for us tonight. Josh Bouchy is here from Cat TV. I understand that we are recording for future replay, so we are out of our normal schedule tonight, but available for future replay. As with all publicly warned meetings, participants will be asked to identify themselves and their place of residence when they speak and we hope that lots of people will speak. For clarity, I want to explain, this is not a regular select board meeting. I see a bunch of new faces and some regulars in the room, so I think that most people know that we're doing something a little bit new tonight. This is a listening session where the public has been invited for an informal discussion with the board and the staff without a proper, without a pre-planned agenda. So I want to show you this for the smiles that come with that. This is tonight's agenda. So it really is open for discussion. Any items that do come out of tonight's discussion that warrants select board or staff follow-up, you'll likely see on a future agenda for perhaps discussion or action if, if appropriate. I want to mention that this, this meeting came out of discussions that started, that two new board members this year brought to us and to you, and that was Clark Adams and Nancy White, who said to us early in their tenure, "Hey, people don't have enough time to chat with the board. There's policy that we follow and it can be frustrating. Can we get together?" And so that was vetted by the board and the staff and here we are. So thank you to Nancy and Clark for suggesting it. Here we are. I think that's it. I'm going to introduce the, my, I'll ask my, my board members, co-board members to introduce themselves and we'll start with Jean on the right. Left, my left, your right.
Hi, I'm Jean Connor.
I'm Clark Adams.
I'm Tom Haley.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Nancy White.
And I'll mention that Stu Hurd is hiding in the audience tonight, but he's here and we're going to tap him for stuff that we need his help with. So, that said, who goes first? It's a public listening session. So don't be shy.
I guess nobody else has a speech, so we'll see you later. I'll speak first.
Mr. Bethel, come on up.
The rules are ten and seven.
And let me tell you, Mike, that that's the only rule. I would ask that we all be respectful of each other, sort of allow time. If you, if you make your point and we, you give us the chance to maybe make some notes on it, move on so that somebody else can have the microphone.
What I brought up in one of the last meetings was the $40,000, $50,000 the board puts out for advertising Bennington, promoting Bennington in the, the 802 program or whatever it is. I don't know how you spend it and I can't really find out how you spend it. I'd like that to be changed with maybe a committee set up from the people downtown to maybe come up with ideas before the budget season or time, so that we can have better promotion of downtown Bennington for next year. If we could do something this year with it, fine. I don't know if you've committed that or not. Is all of that money committed for the whole year? Do you have a contract with somebody? Do you know?
I know we have a contract, but I don't know about commitment. I do have a couple of thoughts, but let's ask Stu to answer the question first about commitment.
Majority of the funds are contracted to 802.
Yep, yep. So, so one point that I want to make is that the marketing fund that you're speaking of is a Bennington fund, not a downtown fund. So your point might be that we would like more downtown Bennington input and folks may agree with that, but I just want to make that point.
Or divide the 40, $50,000 up into sections of the town so that the downtown would say, "Well, we've got 20,000, we've got 15,000," or whatever. And then they could work to add to it if they wanted to. I think the BBC should be brought into this. I've talked to them. They'd like more money to do things. For instance, the billboard out on New York coming into 279. I don't know how much that costs a month or a season. Maybe that's something we could use some of that money for, to rent it, to do some kind of an advertisement, you know, "Here's downtown Bennington. Please stop in and see all of our," you know, just Bennington in general, but downtown and commercial and everything else. But we've got to do something different because I've been going downtown there for a long time in the last few years. Unfortunately, there's just not enough foot traffic. And the weather's been, the last three years anyway, has been terrific. I mean, you can't, you know. So I'd like to see the select board look at that, talk with BBC and maybe some merchants tonight will either agree with me or not agree with me. But I think that's one of the main points I would like to do for the merchants downtown.
I got it. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And it would help you out too. I mean, you're in by the Walmart, you know.
If we have, we all have to agree that if we have a vibrant downtown, we have a much more vibrant town in general.
And I do think more of these sessions should happen, not restrict them for, in an hour, restrict them for an hour. But as people get more relaxed and talking, there's a lot better ideas out there than I have. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point out, can Cat TV hear our town manager? They can't? Okay, so I just wanted to clarify now when people talk and nobody's at the, okay.
Thank you, Sarah. Good point. You're not off the hook, Stu.
Because usually nobody can even hear me on the mic.
All right. Some good thoughts from Mike. I recognize Shirley Adams.
Shirley Adams of Bennington. I'm just kind of building on Mike's idea there. One of the things that might be a good idea, they built those Tesla EV chargers behind the Dunkin' Donuts and I was wondering if there wasn't an opportunity there to put up a billboard or some sort of information about downtown eateries or some of the streets, some of the shops on Main Town. I mean, people are there for 20 or 30 minutes minimum, charging their car.
Or longer.
Or longer. And if there was information about, you know, the places to eat, to shop, because they're already off the highway. Just an idea.
Shirley, that's a great idea and I'm telling you, I'm going to take that directly to the Energy Committee where they might want to collaborate with BBC and others because they're responsible for those charging stations that maybe it could become part of the package.
Ed, on, on that note, I just, I know it was there, but it caught my eye on the way down here. In front of the Bennington Museum, the QR code that's sitting right there in front of the museum, I actually saw a gentleman out there with his phone taking an image of that.
Don't you love seeing that?
Yeah. So again, billboards, I know that's, that's a taboo in Vermont. Don't say billboard. But those QR things are the latest and greatest and I think would be a good idea. And especially if somebody, I've seen online where the Tesla people, you're riding in your Tesla and you need a charge, they will have a map that brings you into Bennington. So these will hopefully capture people who weren't coming here in the first place.
QR code near the charging station.
Right.
You found your way to the charging station, now QR code to find out what you do while you're waiting for your car.
Or your next trip back to town.
Yep.
Other than the QR station. Come and stay at the Muddy Pine Hotel or something.
I love it. Not, not that he's plugging or anything. We didn't hear his stuff. Good stuff. Any other input from the board while the public takes a pause here?
I was just thinking, I think the idea of the QR code is kind of genius and there's probably other places we could put the QR code, not just at a charging station. I don't know where off the top of my head, but there's got to be other locations outside the BBC comes to mind. I don't know, just plaster it everywhere we can think of.
I think that merchants and service providers will appreciate that because if we adopt that as a town and it becomes more of our normal behavior, they will be able to do that. And you know that a QR code allows the seller of goods or services to change up their offerings often and it saves people from having to get their hands on a printed piece of paper to learn.
And I don't use QR codes. I'm kind of old fashioned that way, but they can appear on websites as well. Like it could be on the town, maybe already is. I don't know. Is it?
It is in places, yeah.
It is, okay. But it could be on each merchant's website if they wanted to do that too, I think, anyway.
Good thoughts about QR codes. Nancy?
Yeah, the $50,000 the town taxpayers pay each year to advertise Bennington, this started several years ago and many of the people I've talked to feel we'd be better off rather than giving that $40,000 to an outside group, keeping it locally, having the business owners getting together with the BBC. There's a lot of people in Bennington with great ideas and suggestions. We could do a lot with $40,000 for more events downtown. We could do events that would tie all the businesses together. It isn't just trying to get people off the bypass. We've got to start drawing people within 40 miles from Bennington. People who are going to see the ads and come to town and I don't know when the contract ends. Is this a year-to-year contracts, Stu?
To save myself from walking all the way to the microphone, it is a year-to-year contract. It involves not only 4802, but also the Bennington Banner is involved and helps some of the programming and developing of the ad. So I don't know the details of the contract. That is Shannon Barcay's responsibility, but it is an annual contract.
Okay, well.
But we've heard enough question about it to raise it, Nancy. I like it. I mean, I think we ought to start with Shannon and ask her to help us understand because we don't. What else you got? Anything on that?
No, but I just think, I can't encourage private business owners enough to start speaking publicly. In the last several years, I've had a lot of people talk to me. They have concerns. They're afraid to speak publicly because they said their concerns about repercussions and if you have your money tied in your business, this is your livelihood. You need to speak up. Again, there are so many people with ideas and suggestions and I think people would be willing to step up and volunteer for events and I just think we need to come together locally and decide what the future of Bennington is going to be. Nobody knows Bennington better than those of us who live here or people who may not live here but have a business. So this is what we have to focus on is locally.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking around the room, looking for the next person that wants to speak.
Come on, folks, somebody does have an idea.
Okay, I see a familiar face.
Hi, Vicki Lampren, Bennington. So I'm, I'm not here to offer suggestions because I don't have the knowledge that you all have, but what I will tell you is I will say thank you first of all for doing the listening session. Super important, super important. A really great experience I had with the select board was I had a problem in my neck of the woods and I reached out to a couple of select board members who were super quick to jump on and help me solve the problem and town staff who worked super, super hard to solve a situation that was fair and equitable to both parties. One was a business and one was me, not a local business. So I just want to stress to folks here that these guys really are approachable and even though sometimes we might not like the answers, they are approachable. So thank you.
Thanks, Vicki. I don't think any of us up here mind hearing that. It's all true, by the way, we are accessible. If we don't hear from a bunch of other people, we're going to have to give the mic back to Mike Bethel. Not that we mind doing that, but I see that his wheels are turning over there.
Okay. Do you want to see it turn?
I can tell he's chomping at the bit, guys.
Why don't we ask some of the representatives here to give ideas of what they've seen upstate that would maybe help work with Bennington? And some of you people could have some ideas and tell us what you think we should be doing.
I wonder, and I'm going to ask, maybe Jean can talk about, you know, sort of the past few years or so, because you've been on the board longer, I think, than the rest of us. Any, any history on, on the delegation spending any time with this board?
No.
Not a bad idea to, to invite to a listening session.
Yeah. Can you, can you call them in?
No.
Not that we would welcome them.
We would certainly welcome them. I think it's a great idea. Somebody called, somebody that I was in a conversation with last night reminded me that Bennington is often referred to as the banana belt in Vermont. Drew. So the more that we remind, the better. I see another person coming up to the mic.
Hello, hi, my name's Robert Ebert from Bennington. I read in the banner the other day, I was reading about the Charter Review Committee getting ready to start working on the charter. One thing it mentioned was trying to put something in the charter to make the police review and advisory board to grant it more autonomy. I was wondering if anyone on the select board had a concept in, in your minds of what a more autonomous CPAR would, would be like, what they'd be able to do that they couldn't do now, or how that would change their function.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the former liaison of CPAR to the select board to talk about that because, Tom, you have the most experience on the spot.
I think this idea came from Clark originally.
All right, that's called a forward lateral, I think.
Here, catch.
I'm happy to share my views, but you brought up the idea.
Well, I was part of the group that actually helped formulate what became CPAR. And as it evolved, it turns out the idea that we had put forward had constraints on it under the charter of the town. So as a result of that, instead of CPAR kind of like being an extension of the select board off to the side that comes to us with information, in order to function, it had to be put within the grievance slash complaint process of the PD. And one of my concerns, and a couple of other people expressed it, was to the public at large, if you look at the organizational chart, it says, you know, you file a complaint with the chief, it goes through the system and for whatever reason, it ends up in CPAR. But if you look at the line, it looks like CPAR is under the police department, which it is not, but I think that for increased public confidence, somehow having it external to the police policies and process would be better, not only for appearances, but people feeling it's more accessible. You know, the one thing I kept hearing through the CPAR formation thing was a lot of people were hesitant to get involved with the police department on issues of grievance or whatever. So it ended up due to charter restrictions in the police department grievance section. I am not concerned about how it's functioning, but I think from a public standpoint, it would be better if it were a freestanding organization that, again, reviewed issues that came down. I have no desire for it to become operational or managerial in terms of police operations, but yet when there are concerns and complaints that are presented, that CPAR can review those complaints and their resolutions or response and report concurrences or non-concurrents to the select board. And that, that's my interest in, in the charter revision because we did not get the product I think we were seeking just because of charter constraints a couple of years ago. So I'd kind of like to make that change.
And I, I recall there being some restraints in state law also.
I think it's subpoena stuff and all that, which I never thought was a good idea. No, we should not.
So, I mean, right now, it's in the hands of, of the review committee. Stu, if you could maybe pull in if it was a more charter issue or a more state issue?
Yeah, it's, the CPAR was created by resolution of the select board. It was not, at that time, intended to be a part of the charter. Clark is correct. It has review status where it reviews the complaints that the police have investigated. The question is, I think, do, does, do we want to make the CPAR an investigative authority? And Clark is saying no. Or do we keep it the same way it is? And so I think placing it in the charter doesn't change what its authority is unless you change its authority by placing it in the charter. And, and I think the resolution was fairly concrete that the board developed. I don't think it needs to be in the charter, but that's my own personal opinion, but having it in the charter establishes it more for all time. Right now, it's established by policy of the select board. It can be eliminated by policy of the select board. If it's in the charter, it makes it harder for it to be eliminated. It also makes it harder to be amended. And that's the constraint that the charter provides because it takes a vote of the people to change the charter. So it's, it's, I think its role is pretty well defined by the policy that has been developed by the board. Whether or not it's functioning as it should is really a question for those folks on the CPAR and perhaps the Bennington Police Department as to how it's operating. I know just recently they're talking about going to a bimonthly meeting process as opposed to monthly. That's something the select board has to change. That will be coming to you at some point in the future because they want their meetings to be meaningful, but if there's no business to do, is it worth meeting every month to just talk about things that don't exist? So I think that's a question CPAR will bring to you. Kelly Carroll is the chair. They'll be talking to you about that. But yes, if it's in the charter, it's harder to change. By policy, it can be changed more quickly and perhaps more, more easily? Is that the word? Or easier by the board itself.
Thanks, Stu. I think I see a committee Charter Review Chair taking some notes in the audience. So I would encourage those of you that have an interest in those particular items or any other charter items to pay attention to what that committee is doing. Those meetings are warned and open to the public. Jackie, when are you, what's your, your schedule of meetings going forward?
We will be meeting Fridays at 3:00 PM. Currently, we're meeting in the meeting room at the town office, but if we get a lot of interest from the public, we'll certainly consider moving that maybe to this location, something that's more accommodating.
Great. Thank you.
And speak just a little bit more on CPAR. They did put a lot of work into doing some listening sessions around town and there was not a lot of attendance, unfortunately, at most of those listening sessions. And, and that's really too bad because part of their mission is to solicit input from people of all walks of life across our community. And unfortunately, I think it's going to take a little bit of time and repeated efforts to see, I think, to prove to the members of the public, particularly in, in, in certain demographics, that, that they are actually really sincerely trying to get something done because people are slow to trust a lot of times. And I think it's going to be a matter of just going back again and again and again until finally they can, people can recognize that they really do want the input from, from the community in terms of people's interactions and relationships with our police department.
Good stuff.
Could someone clarify what Clark said? That CPAR, as far as the flow chart, is under the police department? Is, is that the case and can that be changed or?
That is not the case.
Okay.
The policy or, or the resolution that the board set gave the CPAR authority to review incidents or complaints in the police department. I think Clark's was talking about perception, that because, for whatever reason, the CPAR and the PD right now are working very closely together, maybe there's a perception that it's a part of the PD.
Okay.
It is not. It is a standalone organization. It has review authority over complaints against the PD. Frankly, we just don't get a lot of complaints against the PD.
Well, I guess, Mike, then.
I want to clarify that.
Yeah.
I recall when, I think Bruce Clarkley was here, but as it evolved, because of the charter issues, CPAR was not a extension of the select board. That if you look, I guess administratively, the organization, whatever, it fell within the realm of the police complaint slash grievance process. If you look at their policy and so forth, that's where they fell and they couldn't be represented as a freestanding extension of the select board due to what was explained, I can't think of the term that Jeanie mentioned, but it's a charter term. So yeah, it's not a part of the police department grievance per se and all, but it is not that freestanding extension of the select board, which I believe was the original intent to have the select board create this organization that kind of was an extension of us, but the way administratively end up being placed within the police grievance process. You know, it's not part of the PD nor subject to the PD, but using that process, it falls within the PD's grievance slash complaint process. Even when it was first announced, I expressed some concerns that appearances, as we know, one of the biggest problems we had, or the major problem in my mind, was, you know, three years ago, the perception of our oppressive, unfriendly police department.
Right.
So my concern was we need to make sure the public understands that, no, CPAR, if you go to CPAR, you're not going to the man, you know.
But is there an actual visual that would lead someone to believe, like, is there an actual flow chart where the CPAR appears? Or is it just, you're saying it figuratively?
Again, I, as figure, I've not seen the flow chart, but as I recall.
Okay, because if there is a flow chart where it's there, that should be fixed. Yeah.
I know there is not.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, CPAR is a standalone committee appointed through resolution by the select board. It is responsive to the select board and is part of its charge is to review investigations of complaints against the PD. And essentially, if, if they find that they disagree with the PD, report back to the select board with their concerns. Perceptions are sometimes reality. I, CPAR is a standalone organization.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, anything we can do to make that more clear would probably be a good idea.
I think part of the confusion is that people can't file grievances directly to the CPAR. They have to first file them with the PD. The PD has to do their investigation and then the CPAR. The PD has to do their investigation, and then the CPARB can review that information. But that, in my view, isn't ideal necessarily. But as our call at the time was the best that we could come up with.
And that may be...
And work with.
That may be what Clark was referring to. Because maybe, if I can, if I can sort of get inside your brain, the CPARB is part of the police process now.
Correct.
And that's clear based on the fact that it is now mixed into the complaint review process at the police department. So something to look at.
And I'm the liaison now with CPARB. Tom did it for two years, and that's the maximum time that he could serve. So I'm just getting up to speed. But I went to my first meeting just about a week ago, I guess. And the listening sessions came up as a topic, and I wrote some ideas down, which I haven't shared with Kelly yet. But another idea I had with getting the public more engaged is instead of inviting people to come to a listening session, go to the people. Go to, I thought of, you know, I was thinking of the large employers, like set up in an office at the hospital all day, have someone manning it. And people could come and go with concerns and ideas, you know, throughout a workday. And you could do that in other places of employment as well. And there's lots of other ideas, but those, that was one that came to mind. And then, you know, that takes the responsibility away from someone to having to build it into their schedule. But, you know, you're meeting them where they are and makes it easier for people to, might make it easier for people to participate if you remove the barrier of having to go to yet another meeting.
That's especially helpful because CPARB doesn't have a physical place to go.
Right.
It's a, now it's a monthly meeting, right? Maybe less frequent if that agenda doesn't fill, but it's harder. I think that's a great idea. I see a familiar face.
My name is Barbara Bluto, and I live in Bennington. And as a partial solution to the CPARB perception in the community, the description that you gave, Stuart, of what it does and how it does it, gives us a clear understanding of its independence. And maybe if that description could be placed next to their names so that when people are trying to locate them on the downtown site or wherever, they would see that and have a little bit less reluctance to approach them.
Thank you, yeah. Okay. Yes, I see another familiar face in the audience. Hi, Beth.
Hi. My name is Beth Lowall. My husband, Dwayne, and I own two downtown businesses. On a positive note, CPARB was, or representatives of CPARB, was at the Lance Beans and Bagels from the BBC at the local. And they asked for people's input. And I know some of the people that were there would like to see the more presence of downtown police officers. And I have noticed an increase in the walkable up and down Main Street with some local police. And I commend them on that. And thank you, Sarah and Betsy Greenwell, for the Food Truck Festival. A lot of people downtown wish that you could push it more down towards the four corners to bring them down closer. Three other things that I would like to ask. I noticed the Vermont Begins Here website, there is a lot of, it needs to be updated. There's a lot of businesses that are no longer there. And I'm not really sure if it has to do with downtown. Why are we advertising for the big box stores on there? The bakeries and the local supermarkets, I think there are other bakers in town that we could advertise for other than the big box stores. And I really don't know if the select board can do anything, but I believe everybody has a right to protest for what they believe in. But the protesters on the four corners inhabit the people that want to come into our business. And it's a problem. I have people that I want to send down to my corner store that won't go there because of the protesters on the corner. They won't, they won't cross them. And vice versa. If they're in the other store, they won't cross the street through the protesters to come up to the other store. So I really don't know what the solution is for that. And then the last thing is, I know that there was Grow Initiative, Bennington, that they raised a lot of money to put lights on the trees downtown. And I did not see that this past year. And I don't know what happened to that organization or the monies that they raised to put the lights there. I don't know if it's not enough staffing or, I know the lights can't stay on the trees all year long because of the growth of the tree, inhabits the growth of the trees. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. So I've got them, and I appreciate that. I think that one question I'm going to throw back to Stuart is the Grow Bennington Initiative. I think I know what happened to the organization, but was there, were there funds in that organization?
There are funds from the original splash pad fundraising project still in reserve. And those have been used in the past to repair or upgrade the splash pad when we have problems with it. As to the lighting on the trees, I can't answer that question. I don't know what happened to that initiative. I think that was a partnership between the BBC and the Grow Bennington folks. And I just, I don't know what happened to it.
Beth, I think that may come up in our discussion with Shannon Marsady, who might be able to help us sort through it, with your help too at the BBC. Yeah, thank you. Good stuff.
Can I just ask a question? You say, you know, what kind of, these protesters, my concern is if access to your business is being blocked or just their presence is intimidating.
The act, I mean, the people have to cross through the protesters in order to go into our corner store. They gather on the corner. And, you know, I'm not knocking if they want to protest, it's what they believe in, that's great. But if they could go to the corner where the car road through is, where there's nobody trying to get into a business, or the bank where there's no bank there, or that, you know, go there, and it's not inhibiting Fiddlehead, or it's not intimidating our second store.
Okay, so basically, the crosswalk area, you'd like those areas clear?
They come in on all four corners, and it seems to be on the busiest times, whether it be a Friday afternoon or Saturday when there are a lot of people around.
Right, I've seen them too, but my, again, so I guess maybe look at the idea of keeping the crosswalks clear, would that address?
No, it's the sidewalks.
Part of the problem too, and I agree, everybody has a right, and they still, you know, I'm doing a call.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, sir.
And I'm in the corner store a lot. For the most part, protesters are quiet. They hold their signs, you know, cars, bullhorns, that's what people do. But it's, there was a group that had a bullhorn. And I know, and Jane's daughter, she can tell you, as far up as Naps, people were shutting their doors because there's no need for a bullhorn. There's a guy that stands out there, he holds a sign, he yells, okay, that's his right. But don't disrupt, I mean, the local businesses, we have just as much right than the locals. You want to protest, do it peacefully, do it quietly, don't interfere with the local businesses. It's hard enough to have a local business if it is. And as far as the advertising, you can advertise all you want when people get downtown. I dropped a couple of bags across the street with flowers the other day. Before I got back to the store, twice, I had somebody ask me for money. And it's like, boy, I'm 64 years old, I work two jobs, get one. And it just, it gets tiring after a while. When you see, I'm all over the place doing deliveries, all over, Bennington, Powell, Shasberry, Arlington, Manchester, Hudson Falls, I'm all over. And it's gotten sold, and I don't know what the answer is, the drug handles. You drive by and see them on the sidewalk, it's like they don't even try to hide it anymore. That's not something people want to come to Bennington to get a cost for money or, you know, be walking up the street and walk by somebody doing a drug handle. That's, that's not, that's something, and like I said, I don't know what the answer is. But that's not what people want to come to Bennington.
I agree 100%. I know there's a discussion of increased foot traffic for our police department. You know, I've broached this in the past with the chief. Unfortunately, a lot of things, it's issue of resources, you know? I, in a perfect world, I've heard this for years, some people, they like, they want to go like the idea of a beat cop, walking up and down the streets who know the businessmen, know the people, know who should be there, know who should be moving along. And also, the guy with the megaphone, creating a disturbance, you're absolutely right, please, 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 exercise your rights. But your rights end when you start impeding on other people. I've not heard the megaphone thing, but maybe Stu can discuss that with the chief. I think we have a noise ordinance in this town about folks out there with amplified sound.
When they were out there, I liked it. And I said, all this is like, fine, but there's no need for a bullhorn. And I, they were going to pass along, and I don't think that group is better. They were the younger ones. It's older protesters that are, you know, they still block and congest the sidewalk. But it seemed to be that younger group that would yell and scream and are out there with a bullhorn. My wife would let me go down and take a bullhorn and throw it in the street.
That's probably a good idea, Beth.
They have a right to protest, I get that. We have a right, and it's not, it's the business owners. It's hard enough as it is to make a local, small, easy protesters.
You would think that a peaceful protest would include respectfully backing away so that people have clear access to wherever they're going. So we hear you. We don't have an answer either, but it's on the list, so thank you.
I did stop a couple of weekends ago when I was driving up Main Street, and I heard this noise. And I got to the four corners, and I saw the guy with the bullhorn in front of Fiddlehead's with another man. And they were yelling the chants to people on the other two corners. So I pulled over and asked, I said, "Do you need a permit in Bennington to use that?" He said, "No." I said, "Well, I've seen people on the four corners in the past, I hadn't seen a bullhorn." And I just said, "You need to be aware that there are business owners that are concerned that this is impacting their businesses. Nobody has questioned anybody's right to protest." But I said, "You need to be aware, we have a lot of businesses that need customers. And if a customer feels intimidated to go into a business in the downtown, I just want you to be aware of it." I'd heard that some of the protesters park right on the four corners when they're out for an hour or two, meaning that if somebody wants to park and go on a shop, they've got to park further away. And one of the protesters said, "We have the right." I said, "I'm not questioning your right, I just want you to be aware of what a lot of our businesses are against in the downtown, up against in the downtown." So, you know, he said, "Well, we're only here on Saturdays for one or two hours." Well, maybe they could, maybe go to different locations once in a while. Maybe they could be, I don't know, down on the four corners, maybe by the high school, maybe they could be down by Walmart. But I wonder the impact on local businesses. Are people choosing not to go close to the four corners? I haven't really seen them blocking the sidewalks. I just don't know how many customers would be intimidated and say, "Well, I'm not going to go to the four corners, I'll shop farther up on Main Street." But you don't need a permit. I've never seen the bullhorn used on Main Street in my life before. That's why I asked if they needed a permit. And he said, "No," they had checked with the police station. So, you know, you do have the rights, but as Dwayne said, if it's impacting businesses, I just wish there'd be a little more sensitivity from the protesters to the businesses being impacted in the downtown.
Yeah, I believe it's a question of resources here. I want to ask the town manager about the noise ordinance and if we have a panhandling ordinance.
The noise ordinance really deals with decibel levels at the property line. It's an ordinance that is established to control noise off-site, construction noise, other noises. The decibel level that you can achieve with a bullhorn probably would not exceed the decibel level of the ordinance. And the ordinance changes from daytime to nighttime. So I don't think that's a solution. As to the panhandlers ordinance, we did adopt a panhandlers ordinance some years ago. We repealed it on the advice of the Attorney General's Office that we were inflicting or encouraging or interfering with the rights of people and their free speech and their rights to be on this thoroughfare. So in Vermont, panhandling is not considered a crime. It may be an annoyance, it may be a pain, but it is not considered a crime, and the police will not enforce any laws against folks who stop and ask you for money. Simply say no and move on.
Do we currently have something against busking and busking ordinance at this time?
What is this phrase you're using?
Busking, you know, if you're playing an instrument in the street, asking for money.
No, we don't have a law against that. In fact, I think some folks in the BBC would encourage it because it creates activity in the downtown, it creates a lively and perhaps enjoyable atmosphere unless they're really terrible singers or players.
You don't want me busking, believe me. I remember at one point, you had to get a permit. Is that still, do you know if that's still?
Not for, not for that process, no.
All right, thanks.
Stu, as far as panhandling, if it's on private property, if the property owners get a no trespass, then the police can move people on, correct?
Yes, you're right. The property owners can, no trespass, an individual. But a no trespass, you have to identify the individual and has to be served on the individual. So yes, a private property owner can control those folks and those activities on their property. But once you're on public property, there is no law that prohibits it.
I don't think we've had the problem, but I looked into some things about this where aggressive panhandling, I think, can be addressed. But the idea of just simple saying, "Hey buddy, can you spare a dime?" falls well within what the Supreme Court has established as, you know, freedom of speech. But, you know, the idea of some, one of us being harassed by a guy, you know, wanting money, I think that's another story. But luckily, knock on wood, I haven't seen that or heard of aggressive panhandling, you know, the idea of just being solicited.
Several years ago, it was kind of growing several years ago. People have backed off, and now I'm hearing from different people, they're noticing it. I don't think to the extent we had it several years ago, but I think it's something we need to be aware of, especially if it's on private property.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, but unfortunately, you know, the sidewalk is about as public as you can get. So if they're standing on the sidewalk in front of your business, as long as they're not blocking the door, if they're blocking the door, that's another story. But standing in front of your window, hitting up your customers or potential customers, the price of freedom.
Yep. Good point. All good information. So I want to do a time check at 6:47, which means we have about 13 minutes left. And I'm wondering if there are other folks that want to be heard and other topics that we can talk about. I've got some good notes. The town manager speaks.
I want to address one comment that Nancy made earlier, where she talked about people or businesses being afraid of retribution if they bring a complaint or something forward to the town. That does not happen in Bennington. One can approach town officials, select board members, without fear of retribution. I, I'm sorry, Nancy, I just...
I didn't say it was town officials, Stu.
Well, I'm not sure who would, who does the retribution?
I've had, and I've told people, you need to speak up. They say there are, this has been for a couple of years, business owners from across the realm there, they're afraid if they speak up, something could be held against them. It might not be a town official, it may be a different group. This is, and I've tried to tell people, you have to speak up, especially if it's something you feel and know is legitimate. And that's why... And that's why, that's the whole purpose of these sessions, why Clark brought them up a couple of months ago. Many people don't feel welcome to come here because they've watched meetings, and they've watched how some of the citizens have been treated over the past couple of years, and they don't want to come here and be treated that way. And I can stress enough, you know, up until a couple of years ago, people were welcome to come to the meetings. The board would bend over backwards to try to answer a question. If they couldn't answer it that night, they would try to find an answer and tell everybody at the next meeting. And, you know, if our town mission statement says we're inclusive, we have to start being inclusive. People in Bennington, you have to have a say in projects and programs from day one, not when it comes time to pay the bill each year, so. I would encourage people either to come to meetings, or put a letter in the banner, or whatever, this is your town. And I've never seen people so disconnected in Bennington, I mean, even voting-wise. We have close to 10,000 voters, only maybe 3,000 voted at town meeting in March. I mean, voting is such a right and a privilege, whichever way you vote, I don't understand why people don't vote in Bennington.
1,200 at the last election, 1,200 at the last election.
Well, that was the primary, I'm talking town.
I know, but still.
Yeah, you're right.
Right.
I, to second both Nancy and Stuart's comments, you know, I'm a relative newcomer to this town, and as I became involved in a lot of town activities, I heard consistently from people, two, two things at which bothered me, I don't agree with either of them, the idea that if they speak up or stand up, there will be some untoward event. I don't think this is a vindictive town or town governance. And also the idea that speaking up won't accomplish anything. As folks here and folks in Nancy say, Nancy and I spoke up and said, "We want these listening sessions." Guess what? We got it. Somebody had to speak up. Somebody has to, you know, say, "Hey, here's, this is important to me, it needs to happen." And, you know, I truly, truly want Bennington to be, it's a good place now, but we can make it better. And there's 15,000 of us, a lot of good ideas, a lot of good people, and the more who get involved with ideas and actions, the better it is for all of us. I don't, I don't want to focus on negativity, I don't want negativity to be the hallmark of these meetings, or the select board, or town governance, but the most important thing, in my opinion, we can do in this town is stand up, speak up, and work together to make this a better place. Not that it's not a good place already, make it better. And, you know, I, a lot of new faces in the audience here, and I'm very appreciative that you came. Next time, bring your neighbors and your kids.
Mr. Eber.
Yeah, two things real quick. One, I feel like I need to mention this, in the, the report that the chief of police group did on Bennington Police Department a few years ago, out of which CPAR was, was created, there was survey data and anecdotal data in that report about some people's feelings about the police department. And the authors of the report went out of their way to point out that, at least to them, a significant number of the people they talked to spoke about being afraid to either complain about the police, or to even call the police, for fear of retribution. It's in the report, it's in, it's in the document, no one's making this up. I thought from, from the time that report came out, I thought that was the most significant thing in the entire report. And I wish at some point, this issue could be addressed, because if there's anyone, I mean, how many people is enough for it to be significant that feel they could not speak up about the police, or even call the police for assistance, because they're afraid of the response that they are going to get? So I just wanted to, to bring that up. The only other thing I wanted to say is I appreciate all of you doing this, I know you're all busy, and you've got other things to do, and, and you're all here. I've really enjoyed this. I think my main feeling from this is, it's more relaxed. You don't have the pressure of the whole rest of the agenda pushing your desire to get the public comment part of the meeting out of the way. People can speak, I've rarely heard, you discuss things as, as much as you have tonight, and in as relaxed an atmosphere you had. So I don't want, don't know what the plan is, I hope you consider doing this again in the future, I think it was a great idea, so thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment about, after the study got done on the police department, and I don't know if it was the select board or the town, whoever did, did an online survey, and it was well-publicized, and they extended the time for the survey. And I wish I could remember the number of people who participated. I want to say, I don't know if it was 500. And I thought for a town of 10,000 people, and I wish I knew if the number was right, it wasn't many people who participated. Normally, it's the people who are upset about something that are going to take the time to do the survey, and, and I don't have a question that some people may be upset with actions of the police department, but I think overall, most people are supportive of the police department. And, and I guess if there's an issue, I just want people to realize, I don't, I don't know if it's the huge issue that I hear people are afraid to go to the police. When we grew up, the cops were our friends, and it's a shame that, in my opinion, for the past 10 years, this has been put out against the country, all the cops are out to get all of us. I don't think that's true. I think we have a lot of people in this town, estate cops, sheriffs, and troopers, that go out of their way for the public, so. If somebody has real complaints, I want to start seeing numbers, and people should be able to, can't somebody file a complaint without going to the police department through the CPAR?
No.
But you can do it online, can't you?
They can, nothing can be done with it, that's the problem. That may have something to do with due process? Is it due process? They can notify the chair, most of those complaints go to, or comments from the website go to the chair, and her practice, and I think probably best practice under what we have, is to direct them to the police complaint process, because if they want the CPAR to review it, they have to file the complaint with the police first.
Yeah, okay, that's right.
Definitely worth taking a look, though. I think I saw Mr. Hale step up to the mic.
Hello, Zachary Hale, and I'm from Bennington, Vermont. And you guys are all great, I appreciate you, and I just thought that this was a good opportunity to share an idea that I have, in terms of housing, and I think this could be the board to make something like this happen, which is, let's bring senior care facility, another one, to Bennington, and I'm going to tell you why, because I think it is, it is a valuable opportunity for us to, for us to combat some of the housing crisis, and I'm going to throw some numbers out for you. When it comes to seniors, one of our fastest-growing demographics of older Vermonters make over 120% AMI, and when it comes to seniors, they can also pay more than 30% of their income on housing, because in a facility like this, you're going to get more than housing, and so it's actually about 60% of their income. So we have wealthier Vermonters that live here already, who are able to spend more money on housing. When it comes to housing, one of the challenges we have with trying to create it is that it costs more than we can bring revenue in to actually support it after the fact. And so this now opens up a demographic of people that live here, who can afford for developers to build new housing. And, and then have done some market feasibility studies on this as well. One of the, some of the interesting stuff on this 100-unit senior care facility we're looking to try to build, is that, and not in Bennington, so I think, like, there's opportunity to find a developer to make something like this happen, doesn't have to be me, but maybe bring one here. When it comes to 100-unit senior care facility, you actually look at a 10-mile radius from that facility, and you consider that 70% of your new tenants will come from that 10-mile radius. So that frees up 70 housing units within 10 miles of wherever you build this, it saturates the market with housing, and it also frees up housing that currently exists that is affordable for people to move to Vermont and take jobs here, and then live and support, like, their housing, because it's already built. So it's really hard for developers to build housing right now, and this is an opportunity to, to actually build that and create affordable housing for a lot of different demographics and have people move here. So don't have to take any action or comment on it, but you can, or ask questions, but I think, like, this board can make something like that happen, and so I just want to put the thought in your head.
That's interesting, thank you.
Zach, did you say 60%?
Yeah, 60%, because you're, it would cover, so some efficiencies are created there too, right? Like, you can have housing, and you can have care, like, usually you do, like, independent and assisted and memory care, like, in the same facility, and then someone can age in place. So they move, someone move in, people are living in these big houses right now, and they need to downsize, but they can't move anywhere. So you create a facility that has independent living and an apartment, and you provide meals.
Like Brookdale.
Yeah, like Brookdale.
But many, many seniors in Bennington could never afford to go to Brookdale. So to want to have a big, another big facility, so people who have the financial wherewithal to come to the state, well, it really, it really leaves the local people, you know, kind of behind. And the other thing about another senior housing facility, I'm very concerned, to have learned, about the lack of maintenance that was done just at Cora B for the past decade. And I can't help but wonder how many of these other affordable housing complexes in Bennington have had deferred maintenance? So before we hop into other projects, I really hope that we can have a study done. Are all of these affordable complexes in Bennington, are they properly maintained for the people who are living there? Because I think that's a huge priority for, for us to know.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a code that people have to follow, and there's licensing for facilities like this, and I think part of the challenge is that we don't have enough people with income that are walking downtown and actually spending money on businesses. If we were to create 100-unit facility, and 70 people who had the means to buy housing and moved into our community and started working in our community, were then walking downtown and spending money, I think those are the things that we need to do for our economics of Bennington to prosper and grow, and, and achieve the goals that I've heard you talk about.
But you don't have the people to staff the facility either.
Uh, no, but we would free up housing for people to move here and take those shops.
Right, you know, Nancy, it's interesting to hear Zach say that, because I'm one of those people, the house, we, we procured basically an elderly couple, one passed away, and the other one basically couldn't stay there, and ended up in a skilled facility, and we bought the house. So I see the ripple effect, I see it a lot of the time when I drive around town, these big houses, and I say to my wife, "Oh my God, how do they maintain that place?" So the idea of a facility where, unfortunately, my neighbor across the street, who was looking to move to Florida, discovered, "I can't afford to move to Florida, I would like to sell this house, it's a nice house, but I have no place to go." Something like Zach describes, you know, the, I didn't, I didn't hear him say affordable, I think he said people who can afford up to 60% of their income, which isn't the affordable criteria.
The definition of affordable housing is that somebody is spending less or equal to 30% of their income.
Right.
So affordable housing doesn't have to mean subsidized housing. All of our apartments that we rent out, technically, almost all of them are not actually affordable subsidized housing, but everybody that lives in them needs to make at least three times the rent to pass our screening, and so it's technically affordable to every single person that moves into that housing. So it is...
Otherwise, they wouldn't pass the screening.
Otherwise, right, yeah, exactly.
Let me just remind everybody that there were three rules that I said at the beginning. We had to start at 6, we had to hard stop at 7, and people had to identify themselves, and we've come to 7-ish, 7:03.
But I thought, I thought at the last select board meeting, somebody said if there was enough interest, we could go after 7.
No, the conversation was, we would, we would take that up and then schedule future sessions accordingly. We only have this room until 7. We only have staff till 7, we only have cat TV till 7.
Can I add in a positive note?
I would love that. And then we'll, we'll ask that Mr. Beth will be the last speaker. Thank you.
One, thank you for the board for doing this, it's a long time coming, I think we've all enjoyed it. I'd like to also thank Sarah and her partner, Betsy Greenwald, am I saying that correct, for doing the food thing? And we need more like that, that's what I'm talking about with the $40,000, to encourage more things coming in to advertise Bennington. And I'd also like to thank, not last, but not least, the fire department. What they did over the weekend is tremendous, always, in their...
Terrific, yep.
Excellent. There's one complaint I have, there's a girl that worked that wheel that I've lost a lot of money on, and she wouldn't stop the wheel on my number. But I'll take that up with her later on.
I see some finger pointing in the background, Mike. Thank you all, thank you all. Pay attention to, to scheduling and future sessions, great, great turnout, great exchange of information. I know the board and the staff appreciate it.
Begin. Thank all of you for coming.